Who what?
Don't sell them because we weren't supposed to take them. And I got twelve of them at the office still.
Yeah.
So that is the kitchen countertop scrap bucket.
Would think that should be closed in the.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Missy.
Okay.
You can't get that then? That's kind of weird.
Yeah, I'll look more into it, but.
You want this?
Yeah.
Are we having a meeting today?
I think we're waiting for Peter.
Oh, okay.
He was supposed to join in on.
So a lot of people confuse that bucket, they call that a compost bin. That is not a compost. That's what you carry your food scraps to your compost bin.
So that's, those are the ones we picked up from Forever.
One of the, so you had two different things, so you had the big black things. And then those buckets right there.
Right, and you told us we were not supposed to pick up the buckets, but we have them.
Right, right, exactly, so, I mean, if you, they're obviously not missing them, and to be honest, it'd be such a hassle, returning them now, and you know, all that stuff, so may as well keep them.
Well, the guy went on vacation, so we took some of his inventory without him knowing.
Okay.
So that's gotta be corrected.
That's fine, no, 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 that's fine, I'll, I'll just let him know what you've got.
And Somerset never took their part, so I think Elizabeth is already selling that.
Okay.
I only have one left, so.
That was ours, alright, I didn't bring you, I didn't bring you the other ones, yeah. Your little industry don't. Do you have candy bars and stuff like that?
I do, it was a free.
Okay, I'll call the meet new order. All we're missing is Peter, oh, Peter and Ralph.
Ralph is out today.
So we got one more than half, so we should be okay, right?
What do you mean for quorum?
One more than half.
Yeah.
We got that now. Right. So it's a stand pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Tom Perry is present, Mr. Vatako is off today. I believe Mr. Karen is gonna zoom in in a little bit. Also present is Mr. Perry, Mr. Neely, and Elizabeth. Ms. Elizabeth, you're not a member? You just enjoy coming up here to take notes. Okay, next on the agenda would be reports. So since our last meeting, I, I get a report. I know we're a solid waste committee, but I'll keep you apprised. It's not really us. Transfer station attendant is not with us no more. We hired a new one, he started Friday, Saturday.
Did he get a job as a club?
Uh, no, he got a job in Dedham, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Water District. Um, so the new guy is working out well, he's grabbing the computers stuff pretty good. Uh, we got a few more quirks to work out. He, like, one of my guys worked with him, he's coming Saturday one more time, that's fine. So, which worked out well, because last Friday, we never had such a busy Friday.
Really?
Because we were closed the Saturday before. That's what they all claim, so, why did they come in Fridays anyways? Anyways, so Friday, Saturday was very busy, and we sold a lot of stickers. For some reason, um, the previous attendant was letting people come in without a current sticker. Uh, we're still catching up on that, well, the dollar value was around a thousand dollars, so.
Really?
It added up, I, I, me and Heather caught it by doing something else. You know, on paperwork and checking reports, and we caught it. So we nipped that in the butt, um, some of them already came in and bought a sticker, you know, letting them know that, you know, because it, there, there still seems to be a confusion about December end of the year until June end of the year, we're on June, the year ends at the end of June. So that's why you saw the message board up by there, it said what it said. I just changed it today to something else. So, that in a nutshell, I may as well just stay on that transfer station. So the message board was reminding everyone for a few days over the weekend about the stickers, need a new sticker by July 1st. And today I just switched it, um. I actually would like to, to start something, like for the Sluckman's meeting and whatnot.
If you have a sticker that's good for this, for this year, that's still good, right?
No, you said it wrong. We, last year, we switched over to fiscal year. July 1st to June 30th.
Yeah, but doesn't the sticker say food July? Does it say July on it?
No.
So it's good for 25?
No.
What does it say on it?
Twenty-five would end June 30th.
Oh, you're going by the fiscal year.
We're going with fiscal year, we started that last year. Right in the middle of the year, where we assessed everyone either fifteen dollars or thirty. If they already had a sticker, we just assess them to fifteen.
It made the, when we talked about it and looked at the, the cost accounting and the monetary flow, et cetera, it just seemed to, to make sense to align it with the fiscal year instead of October.
What's the rate now?
Thirty, thirty, that hasn't changed, it's thirty. And.
And that's good until the fiscal, end of fiscal year next year.
Correct.
Gotcha.
I, I wanted that because we came up with that dollar value, and that represents the salary for the attendant. So he wo, he works a fiscal year, to me, it makes sense to go the fiscal year. So with that dilemma, uh, some came in, we got that money. Uh, we just sent out invoices for the people that are left, I think days twenty-five or twenty-six that went invoiced today and that. So hopefully that'll get corrected. Soon, because that's gonna affect payroll. Um, the message board now, um, I, I'd like to start something, either one of us or me, myself, once in a while, coming for public input for Sluckman's meeting, or the message board, or a combination of the two. I was gonna do like, don't be that guy series. Don't be that guy that. But I guess that's politically incorrect, and we cannot do that. Because guy is sexist, and it's a derogatory comment, don't be that stupid guy. That's not what we're trying to say, we're just being, I just wanted it as a friendly, a funny reminder.
Can't change guy to person?
That wouldn't make it funny.
Okay. Okay.
So today's message, it says, do you know that all items that fit in a bag do not come to transfer station? Please put in the town bag curbside. That's a lot of message for you to read from Forest Street, but you can see it, you, they're quick pages. But yeah, that's all it takes is like public input, someone to say that, that for, for that month, and that'd be, and over time, the education component is gonna work. Because we're, we're finding, for some reason, they're not grabbing, we still got small items coming in.
Yeah, we could point a discussion here, um. We talked about something, I think, which is going to come up here, the little snippet of information Elizabeth and I put together. But, you know, with things like this that affect the whole community, in, in this case, you know, put it in a bag. I, I think somehow we need to, to start a protocol here where things like this can be announced at other boards also, I mean, may say, well, people don't watch this board or that board, well, if you pick up twenty people.
Yeah.
It's, it's still a gain, so. I, I think one of the discussion points, since it's not on the agenda, maybe for next time, is how do we establish a protocol? That things like this that affect the whole community can just, uh, maybe a board at the, uh, the planning board, for example, at the end or the beginning of their meeting, you know, the chairman could say, oh, by the way, we've got an announcement from da, 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 and, you know, more people would hear the.
Right.
You know, I, I just, so, something for next time.
But it, it's gotta be creative, because then it, it's just, it's just another drama, that's why I thought, don't be that guy would've been.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you can drop tin cans on purpose or something, or dress funny, whatever, don't be that guy.
Or, you know, you could've just said, don't be one of those.
That's still, that's still a derogatory comment, you don't.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be what worse.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's kind of like the slow children sign, you can't use them no more.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes, because that's a derogatory comment.
Okay.
In some people's eyes.
Well, yeah.
People with the incredibly thin skin.
Um, but I totally agree that having it announced at more than one meeting, also having it posted at various departments, you know, not only at the Board of Health, but also in, you know, the schools and, you know, and the town hall, you know, really getting the message out all over, because trash is one of those of things that affects all households in town, the ones that you serve at least, you know. So.
And if you, if you inundate people with this information, ultimately, some of them are gonna say, you know, maybe I should do that, if they see it here, see it there, see it everywhere, to your point.
Yeah. And, and in different formats, and that's the other thing is, you know, some people could drive by that sign, you know, ten times a week and never really notice or, but yet they all of a sudden it's in, you know, I don't know, some newsletter or something, then boom, then they see it. Or at the library, or they talk to their neighbor, so, um, yeah, it's.
Maybe, since it's not on the agenda, if we could maybe make that an agenda item next time, how, how we could go about doing that, because you, you know, the more often you put it out there everywhere, uh, you could say, well, again, it might only affect twenty people, that's twenty people that affected, you know?
Don't be that guy.
Yeah, don't be that guy.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, and it, um, and education and outreach communication should definitely be on for next, next, next time. Um, I, at one point, I will not be here next time, I actually have a conference in Boston all that day. Um, but yeah, that's definitely a really important one, and I can submit for that meeting a bunch of ideas and ways that I suggest to my, my other municipalities.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's, any other reports? Okay, old business, Swap Shed. There's, there's nothing new on the Swap Shed on your end, Missy, right?
Um, nope, so the grants have been, um, reviewed, and, and they're submitted now up through the, the financial chain, you know, heading up to the governor's office, and hopefully this year, they will not be as late as they were last year, so, um, that, yeah, so that should be good.
Expect them to be quick, because the Boston political climate seems to be, no, yes, you think?
Well, the, the reason last year had to do with something, um, that, um, has been resolved, so. Anyway.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sure.
Before we get going. We get tied up in a lot of lengthy discussions on issues out here, and I'm thinking about that, and I'm saying to myself, maybe a couple of people on, uh, on this committee could get together and form a subcommittee to talk about the method of operation at the shed, and then bring, bring that back to the committee here and refine it.
Bring your recommendation back, I like, I like that idea.
Without, you know, because we spend a lot of time talking about a lot of things, and it's.
You got a slim, you got slim pickings today, though.
Well, it's an idea, put it out there, it might happen, it might not happen, I don't know.
We, we were gonna receive some rules from this, or some protocols from other, uh, municipalities.
Missy, did you send out those rules?
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Did you send out the rules? You were supposed to send out some rules.
Oh, I sent them, I sent them, yes, yes.
Okay.
I thought I sent them to everybody.
Microphones, yeah.
I'll, I'll print those out, and then we'll have some.
If not, I, it's sitting, I have it in front of me. Okay.
Do you wanna go over it, Missy?
Sure, is this the time, we wanna do this now?
Uh, actually, there's a section, there's all business.
Okay, 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 and then I, if you want, I don't know if you can actually read it, I can share it.
Are you all done, your reports, Tom?
Reports are done, we're, we're on Swap Shed right now.
All right, Peter's jumping on now. Good timing. Peter, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thanks, guys.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Yep. So we, we already got started, Peter, we're already down to the Swap Shed discussion on old business.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Neely brought up a point, um, possibly start a subcommittee to keep that moving behind the scenes and make a recommendation to the solid waste committee.
Right.
Speed up, speed up the process.
Yes, definitely. Um, I, I, I guess the, one of the things I want to ask you, is there enough of a return for the energy that we're gonna put into this?
Uh, no, it would be, what you're after is a reduction in waste.
You're right, uh, but is it going to be that much of a reduction that the energy that we're going to?
That's, that's a good question, I believe so. Because a lot of it, because a lot of it is either, like, wood furniture or ceramic, like these, a lot of ceramics you see in yacht sales, and that's quite a bit of tonnage.
Yeah, so this is what we consider one of our, our best practices, um, to help reduce, uh, the tonnage, as, as, as Tom said.
Peter, this is Bob Perry, how are you doing today? Peter? Hello?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, um, my view on this thing is, um, in, in response to your question, I think we should try it.
Yeah.
If, if we don't, we'll never know, it may succeed, it may fail. If, but if we don't try it, that's automatic failure.
Right.
Uh, if we try it and we succeed, we'll drive costs down.
Sure.
Okay, in terms of, you know, what we have to pay for total tonnage. If it doesn't, if it fails, then it fails, at least we tried to, uh, you know, we tried to do something positive, and it didn't work out, but I, I think we need to take that leap and see what happens.
Okay, uh, I, I was just concerned that, you know, we've been talking about this for six months now, and, um, through, through, I mean, it's a process, I understand that. Uh, I just felt like, we, we've talked so much about it, and we still have a hurdle to get over, which is manning these things. And I know we've talked about Boy Scouts, the Lions Club, and volunteers, uh, who's gonna micromanage this, I guess? Is it gonna be the, the attendant at the land, uh, at the transfer station?
It needs to be worked out, and, uh, I appreciate Mr. Neely's, uh, opinion about the subcommittee that has that out. Mm-hmm. I, I know off the cuff, I'm still a firm believer, we, it should be utilizing the transfer station fee to use it.
Right.
Uh, but we're not there yet, because, uh, we want people to use it, and the, the committee's gotta explore it, so, I, I, I agree, let's have the subcommittee. Are, are you willing to be on it yourself?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, I would help out.
Peter's willing to help, I'm assuming Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I, I would, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I would too, but can we have three of us on the subcommittee?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think it needs to be much bigger than three, yeah.
No. Would that be considered, uh, a quorum?
Quorum, yeah.
That's, oh, yeah, how's that work?
Yes, it would be, yes, it would be.
It depends on the composition of the committee. If it's three people, two would be a quorum.
Being, uh, it's doing fieldwork, though, right?
Uh, I would assume some fieldwork is gonna be involved, yes.
But you need to post all the meetings, all the times you get together?
Uh, no, if it's just a subcommittee, you don't have to post them.
Right.
So, we, we wouldn't have to worry about that, as long as we had a quorum, we could, we could always, uh, uh, do work.
Okay. Sure.
I think it's a good idea, because.
Yeah.
Based on my business experience, I know when the subject comes out to this table, it's gonna be a lot of.
I'm good.
A lot of, uh, discussion.
Yep.
A lot of time put into it to, to come to a conclusion.
One, one of the reasons why it has been dragged on, Peter, is because it, there was a grant process, it's been submitted, pre-reviewed, uh, Missy just reported the information went to Boston, there's no answer yet, we do not expect an answer on a grant until closer to December, if not in December. So we, we got time, but yet we don't, because it's already basically October.
Right. Yep. Okay, uh, uh, you've enlightened me, thank you.
All right, so we have a subcommittee.
Yep.
Mr. Neely, Mr. Perry, and Mr.
Oh, good, okay.
Peter. Peter Karen.
Since you have business.
And would I be?
Well, they're gonna report to the, they're gonna report to the solid waste committee, Missy, and that's when you and I.
Okay.
That's when you and I get beat up.
Okay, got it, okay. I wanna know what my role was.
Yeah. All right, uh, we all set with the Swap Shed at this time?
Uh, I, I am now, thank you.
Me too.
Okay, thank you. Compost bins next. So I know Elizabeth's been selling them, we still have six from Somerset that they never claimed. Um, I think we're gonna start selling those.
Perfect, go for it.
Yep, I, I brought in Peter. When we originally picked up the compost bins, we picked these up, they're called tabletops, or countertops. That's where you put your food waste in and carry it out to your bins.
Right.
I brought it in, if Missy thought it was all right to sell, because I got twelve of them.
Yep.
Yep.
If we're gonna sell them, I think we gotta make a recommendation for a dollar value, and Sluckman's gotta approve that, isn't that correct?
That is correct, um, they're, they're fairly cheap on, on Amazon, they're airtight, I'm not saying we should go that route, I'm just saying we'd have to be competitive with that somewhat, if we want people to buy them. Uh, of course, the, the benefit is you get it right away, and it's, you're helping the town, uh, so, uh, yeah, I, 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 we have one at home that we use that, again, we bought from Amazon, I don't remember how much it was, but we had priced them out, and it was for us the way to go. Uh, I, I think, um, uh, again, I'd have to look at the, how much they cost, but we should be around that same ballpark, I would think.
So, so the, what I'm trying to do is get my smaller towns like Dyton and Somerset and all the other smaller ones to work with my cities like New Bedford, Fall River, who can buy it in larger bulk and get some of those discounts and the economies of scale. So I think it brings down the, the price of that compost bin, it's anywhere from five to ten dollars.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, you wanna, you don't have to sell it at cost, you can't sell it more than cost to get the points. Um, but, um, I would highly recommend, you know, like I said, definitely being competitive with it, because it's, in my opinion, it, it's the perfect thing to go along with a compost bin, you could actually sell them together as a, a peanut butter and jelly effect, like you buy, you know, one price for both of them.
Yeah.
So, um, because it really, in my opinion, like I said, it really helps with composting.
Oh, it does, we use it all the time, and, uh, it's, we've used it for years, and, and we have, obviously, we have a garden and we compost, uh, but we would be doing it anyway, even if we, we didn't, uh, just for fertilizing, but the, uh, uh, it's a, it's a great idea to, like you said, peanut butter and jelly them, as well as, uh, you have to have something, because that's an important step, nobody's going to go out to the compost bin every night and clean their plates. Uh, we, you have to have that countertop or something that you can put under, in a counter, I mean, in a cabinet or something.
Yeah, yep, a, and I wanna say is that it's hard for a dog to get into them, I can speak, I can speak from personal experience.
Okay.
We got bite marks, but he was not successful.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is that, what I wanted to mention, and, and also when I saw the, um, gentleman from the library presenting a, a couple of months ago, when I did the bag presentation, is that I would be more than, than, um, you know, willing to come down and do like a presentation at the library, which are turning out to be very popular in a lot of communities, um, to talk about composting, and the fall, in my opinion, is the best time for someone to start who's never done it, because you need those brown fall leaves.
Right.
You know, so, um, if we could work out something, if you guys could set up something with the library, I'd be more than happy to come down on a weekend or a night or whenever it's open, and do that kind of thing.
They have their grand opening on the twentieth, uh, so obviously give them a couple of weeks, but sure, we can arrange something.
Yeah, oh, great. And then also, like with the library, again, with part of that education component we were talking about, um, is, um, the library's another phenomenal resource, because sometimes they have display areas, so you might be able to display, you know, the compost bin, or like posters about composting, and, and you know, the town offers it, and all that kind of fun stuff, so.
Good.
Since, since we're discussing, um, you know, getting the word out to the public, um, I'd like to do two things here, if I may. Elizabeth put together a reduce your trash costs through composting sheet that describes everything very nicely. Um, what I would propose, and, and I had already asked Elizabeth, maybe, uh, what it says, uh, it says, reduce your trash costs through composting. Uh, sub bullets, approximately twenty-five percent of household trash weight is food scraps, waste, leftover, meat, bread, vegetable, peels, et cetera. Second bullet, keep trash costs from rising by lowering food scrap weight. Third bullet, composting will cut costs, fourth bullet, reduce trash bag usage. Fifth bullet, Dyton is offering composting bins at less than half the cost, and then the sub bullet, uh, bins are valued at sixty-seven dollars, your cost thirty dollars. Uh, second sub bullet, uh, bins are large and pest-proof, third sub bullet, great for your gardens. Uh, and then other ways to reduce, uh, food scrap waste, ask a farmer slash neighbor, someone you know may already be composting. Second bullet, uh, look at your closest compost site and go www.mass.gov slash doc slash map, uh, hyphen list, for more info, call, uh, order a bin at the health department, it gives the health department's number. Uh, I would propose to the committee that, and just a suggestion, we put reduce your trash costs instead of in black and red. And the reason I say it, because I think we should take this flyer, and right now, we can hang it in every public building in town, and, um, uh, then, uh, might be appropriate to ask the board of selectmen if they would concur with us going around to the businesses in town, like the non-public facilities, and ask if we could either hang this in there or leave some with them.
Yeah.
I just said a lot, but that's what I propose.
No, yeah, there, there were all good ideas, the, uh, see, we can ha, hang in the, at town hall, and, uh, the Sluckman's not gonna be concerned about whether they, they go to businesses, uh, there, there's no re, reason why they can't. And, and I would, I would think that all of our businesses in town would love to help out. The countertop ones, uh, it, in addition to reducing waste, you don't have the smell of keeping it in your garbage pail for three or four days.
Yeah.
There, there's nothing but positive things about, about doing, uh, 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 waste compost.
Well, and the, the reason I bring that up is because we've got this great flyer here with a great deal of information on it.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get it out there.
So, there's a couple of information, um, maybe if Elizabeth could send it to me, but I think she mentioned meat in there.
Yeah.
Do not, in a backyard compost bin, do not put meat, dairy, or any oils or fats. It will attract animals, and it actually slows down the process, it's only, it's only good for large commercial entities. And then I think also the map kind of thing she was talking about, those are, those are for really large commercials, then only businesses can really go to, so it's not gonna help your hometown residents, and then, um, the other ways you can cut down on food waste is, um, I can send you other links for this, but basically not buying as much food, buy only what you need, uh, freezing thing, you know, it might sound stupid, but you know, some people don't think, oh, this meat, I, if I just pop it in the freezer, I've got it forever, whereas I, you know, letting it rot kind of thing. So, some of those step back things that some of us older people might know already, um, and then also another project I'm gonna propose for you guys to think about next year, it's called a community fridge. Um, and, and based in a food, little food pantry, you might have something similar in your council on aging now. Um, but basically, it's a refrigerator freezer out for outdoors, and also like a little mini food pantry-like closet thing kind of built around it. And residents who have excess food, um, rather than throwing it away or whatever, they can put it there, it's not, it's not the household food that you made your dinner and you have left, you know, extra food. But you know, let's say you bought, you know, way too much, uh, pasta or whatever, and then, then all of a sudden, you're, you, you have celiac, you know, you can't, you have to get rid of all this pasta, that kind of thing. So residents could put that there, and what it is, it's, it is a way for residents who might have food insecurity, um, temporarily, they're not, maybe have enough to like, um, be able to get food. um, temporarily, they're not, maybe have enough to like, um, be able to get food assistance. But these are for people who do not have to go through, you know, registered channels that they could go and get this anytime. Usually we suggest putting this near really well-lit public areas. Um, you know, so there's no vandalism, that kind of thing, but it's, we're finding out, it's, it's a huge way to find out, you know, the food insecurity in my, in your areas, like in my town, it's, it's, it's way higher than we ever thought it was.
Right.
Really opened up the door, so that's another project for next year that can actually help with the RDP points and grants as well. And help your community that you might not know, you know, is, is really struggling.
Right. It, it, it amazes me that, uh, well, we all are feeling the effect of food prices increasing.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, if, if, uh, people who never needed help, need help.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's always been sad that people even needed help, but that, that's, that's the way it is. But, uh, anything that we can advertise, uh, I, I, I think there should be some kind of asterisk on that poster, Bob, that says, you know, meats and, and dairy and oils are excluded. I, I haven't seen the poster, so I don't know if there's already something like that. Uh, but, uh, as well as, uh, just what you said, uh, Missy, about the, the, the food that would be available. Uh, it would, it, it's gonna be certainly an education process that.
Yep.
I, I, I think we do a better job of getting the word out. Um, uh, I'm not 100% sure that people pay attention enough, but it, it's not for lack of trying anyway.
Missy, can you send that over to me, and I'll update the flyer, and then send it back out to the committee?
Yep, yep, so if you send that over to me, then I can, uh, send it back.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, before I go next on the agenda, and the next on the agenda is setting fees. Uh, do we want to morph the, the, those countertop bins with that, or do we want to work on that separately before I go on there? Should I be entertaining a motion for the compost bins now, so we can make a recommendation, the selectmen to vote on?
I would say so.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to.
How do you want to word it?
Uh, like Missy says, either five or $10, that's not the total cost of the bins, we absorb the rest.
Right.
So moved.
Right, and they're gonna find you can get them cheaper on Amazon anyways, and they're encouraged to do their own homework, so they have that.
Yeah. Okay.
Five or $10.
I recommend the five.
I, I recommend the five as well, that's, that's a real encouraging price.
Yeah, it is. Uh, I, I also, that was the one I, I highly suggested as well.
Okay, is there, has it been seconded?
Yeah, I don't.
Okay. I'll second it.
So, I don't know if I have to step down and make a motion, I believe.
Yes.
I, I. You described everything, $5, and I said so moved.
All right, so you, yes, we do have a motion made in second, any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I, I have it, anyone oppose? Okay, thank you.
Uh, when it comes to fees, the selectmen have decided that every October, we're going to address the fees in town. Uh, everything from what we charge for a building permit to what the zoning charges for, uh, an application to trash bags. Uh, not that we can't raise trash bags during the year, I, I don't mean that aspect, I don't mean that, or implying that at all. It's just that, instead of half-assing this, um, we, we're just gonna try to streamline it and say, we, we will, we will look at what's going on, uh, every October and, and just make the recommendations, uh, ourselves. If, if there's nobody from a particular board that has an objection to it, a- and, um, i- so if we can work around that October, uh, going forward, it would, it would help out.
Thank you, um, and, and Ralph is not here also, I think that was one of his ideas or yours, working with him.
Yep.
Um, I do have a question with that, before we go into our fees. Um, I, I do like that idea, and I do like the idea that we, it forces everyone to look at their fees, so they don't fall behind like the trash bags have.
Sure.
That's a good example, I don't think there's anything wrong with using the trash bags, because that really should have been in increments over the years. Um, however, where is, is a, a time of October that you guys are making that?
Not, that, it hasn't been decided yet, we just picked October, um, because it would be right around the town meeting, fall meeting.
Okay, so there's a good chance our next waste reduction meeting was before that then, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so I handed out here the fee schedule, it wasn't the most up-to-date, the, the prices are. And you, you can get one online, I'm sure you know where to find it.
Yes, I do.
So I, I suggest, I'm suggesting that across the board, a $2 increment across the board, and also entertain of adding furniture. Because like now, if a, a, a broken bureau came in, there's no way to assess the person.
Yep.
But I don't want to itemize it as the bureau, I'm thinking furniture, the word furniture.
I got a question, that's, that's kind of kind of broad.
I mean, I, I do, I did that on purpose, yes. Well, no, then, you do have specific on the sectional couch and couch, that's in your schedule already. But the furniture is not there, we already discussed the rug scenario earlier this year, we're not trying to take that. Um, but the furniture like a bureau, um, it's not much left that's left, a, a, a asset.
I, would it be appropriate, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking a question, to break it down into wooden or metal furniture? What, for weight perspective? I, I don't know, it's.
I, I don't think you need to, because you have partial miscellaneous metals, and you have a full load of them.
Okay, okay, yeah, no.
That's why I'd like to keep the furniture proper, rather than add a half dozen or a dozen items to the list.
Have we ever thought about, um, organizations out there, they would take stuff like the Kidney Foundation, Salvation Army, and stuff like that?
Yes.
As a possible way to get rid of things?
Yes, and that's.
Do you have a list of that?
Uh, this swap shed needs to be addressed that, that's the avenue.
Yeah.
Because I do not want anything to go in our roll-offs. So after we pick through, and we figure out, knowing about entities want or use it, the residents are not taking it. Like Savers, for example, supposedly will take whatever we have regardless.
Right.
So I'm hoping you guys, is, that's part of your charge, is how, at the end of the day, where is it going?
Yes.
Right.
Or the end of the month.
So when I have the rules, I have that, it's all factored into all of that already. But as far as, um, these charities taking the stuff, the problem is right now they're inundated, and the quality of the furniture has gone down.
Yes.
So the charities have become extremely, um, particular what they take.
Yeah.
Um, very selective, yes, um, Savers is probably the least so, but they won't come and pick it up from you. So again, there's that value of taking a town employee or two and taking it somewhere. So you really want to like, stop it before it even gets there, um, you know, and then by, I like Tom's idea of keeping it furniture, because any more furniture has so many different components to it, um, that, you know, it might be metal and wood, and you know, all this other stuff. Um, so keeping it that way is, is good, but, so yeah, so part of the whole, um, and I apologize, I thought I sent the rules, I spent a lot of time working on it on Friday, I forgot to send it. But that was one of the, the parts is that, you know, it, it will address other places where people can take stuff, and that the attendant, you know, is the one who makes the decision on the quality of it and the size. So I thought we would start with the size of nothing larger than four by four or whatever, you know, uh, furniture, so you were, you know, what, you're only taking a small, good furniture that would have an, uh, likely to have a second use, rather than going into the trash, because that's exactly.
What are you doing with the rest of it?
Uh, if, we, we, we're all kind of out of order right now.
Yeah, yeah, we're out of order, but what I wanted to say is that, so again, the whole goal is not to have it end up in the trash, and so these fees that Tom is setting, um, can be really messed up if that is not followed, um, carefully.
Correct, so to clear up what Mr. Neely is asking, did we answer your question? There are entities out there to take whatever's coming in.
Right.
Okay.
What, what about stuff we can't take?
For the swap shed, are you talking about?
Either way.
Well, that, that's, I'm bringing up what's going in the transfer station for disposal.
Well, if the swap shed is at the transfer station, and it can't go into the swap shed, then the resident's gonna have to pay for it to go in the trash.
Exactly, exactly.
So, the tenant says, no, it's not in good shape, we can't take it, and maybe for it to get thrown away.
That's assuming the swap shed's at the transfer station, it might end up somewhere else.
That's one of the reasons why I was thinking about having a subcommittee, because that's definitely gonna be an issue.
Right.
Right in, right in your rules, right from the very beginning.
Yes, all right, back to the fees, and I am brink, talking about transfer station fees. Um, I'm just throwing it out there, the $2 across the board, and then furniture, for example, uh, the current price would have been 20, so if we're gonna have, make a recommendation to the selectmen, it would be 22, if that's an item. But that's my recommendation, I'm not asking it for to be acted on today. I'm suggesting everyone review their list, that'll be on agenda for next meeting, we'll be ahead of the fee assessment for the selectmen.
How much, um, first of all, I agree with, um, you know, that breakdown.
Five is too much.
And, I'm sorry?
Five is too much.
Yeah, well, no, no, I, I, I just, um, as a little bit of backup, uh, I think it would be wise to, you know, prepare to, uh, present this to the selectman, you know, two bucks across the board, just be able to say, uh, for benefit of the public on camera, that our fees have risen by X percentage, whatever. Therefore, we have to increase, you know, to cover those fees for us to dispose of it, that's.
Correct.
Exactly, yes, perfect.
Yep.
And what were you proposing for the furniture, 22 bucks?
Yeah, because it's similar to a couch, that's how I call it, the 22.
Right.
That's what the new.
Yeah.
Item would be.
So that, yeah, it's the added item, okay.
So if you add $2 to any item, including the freon items, because that's working out, and there was a little increase. Uh, you don't see that expense, I just had all the freon removed and.
No, but I mean, if you could, uh, just, I, I think simply is showing, uh, what the costs were, you know, maybe the last year, and how much they've increased for this year, therefore it is essential that we do this, because, you know, it's gonna come out of appropriated, otherwise.
Yeah.
Yep, Tom, Tom, has anybody been walking at the fees that we charged now?
No, uh, most of the problems is they're not educated. Uh, they're bringing combing loads, and like I said, a lot, a lot of it is just, it could have fit in a trash bag.
Right.
And then, uh, we, we really should just reject these loads, too much time's gone by. Taking them in, taking them in, and trying to compromise is not a help, we, we just gonna have to get hard nosed.
Or you got a brand-new attendant, so.
That's, that's why we're taking advantage of it, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I have no objections to raising the fees. Uh, it, it, the people who are using it, you got, today, you gotta pay to throw away. And you, you have to smart, uh, shop smarter today than, than ever before.
Yes, and a lot, a lot of the items on the, the list, when you buy a new item, they'll take the old one too.
Yeah. And that's again, you know, part of the education process that we need to get residents to start thinking about that.
Right, we, we gotta educate them before they buy something, we gotta, we gotta get there, you gotta, don't be that guy.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, it's kind of interesting, if, if you present it to people, it's, well, it's gonna, you buy a new refrigerator, it's gonna be, just to make up a number, it's gonna be 40 bucks to, to haul it away by the, you know, the company that sold it to you. 40 bucks, I'm not paying the 40 bucks, okay, so you want to take it, put it in the back of your vehicle, haul it through your house, put it in the back of your vehicle, uh, take it down, pay X number of bucks, which is easier to do, write a check for 40 or, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's the same thing with, with, when we had the mattress ban, that's example that I would, I had for people, like, pay the 40 to the mattress company, or do you want to schlep it down the stairs, trip over the cat, knock over the lamp, get it out to your car, hoist it on there to save, you know, $5, or you know, have it, it'd be even more money, kind of thing, so yeah, it's exactly that, and getting, and getting residents to understand that.
With the exception of the cat, that was me.
I had the cat, I had the cat.
But most, um, mattress places take your old mattress now, I mean, it's built into the price. The, the advertisers free return, but in reality, you're just paying more for the mattress. So, uh, that, that's one item that people who are buying new mattresses really should be aware of, uh, of where they shop and who's going to take it for free.
Yep.
So I'm a little concerned with that, I'm gonna look into that before our next meeting closer. Our numbers haven't gone down, and I've heard people comment, we're a lot cheaper in a lot of places, so when I hea-, when I hear that, I'm questioning all our mattresses, Dayton mattresses.
Tom, what are the prices on them?
Uh, 40.
Uh, that's, that's low. Yeah. Um, you're looking at at least six.
You know, we get an awful lot of mattresses in that town, and I question if they're all from Dayton.
What is, what is our current input from mattresses look like from that past three and a half years of data? I mean, has it gone up significantly?
I, I'll have to make a graph, but it's been pretty consistent. I'll have to make a graph.
Well, no, I mean, just, in, you, you see the numbers, is it a significant rise or, or?
We, we're gonna have to, I'll have to get that for you.
Well, I mean, I would absolutely, if it, if you're, you know, then you're the man up front, and you're seeing that, are they all, are asking the question, are they all Dayton mattresses, yeah, then maybe we need to look at, in addition to the, or instead of $2 on that one, maybe we have to go up much, much higher.
Since you're aware of this issue, have you thought about ways to cure it?
Oh, it's locked up. No, but I mean, they need to have a.
Well, but you could bring a mattress in there, even if it's locked up, you could bring a mattress, and you don't know where it comes from.
That, that doesn't happen.
How do you know that?
Well, you got a lock gate.
No, even with the attendants there, I could show where the mattress I got from my daughter's house in Somerset.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem all over the state.
That's a potential problem, yes.
I thought that's, that's what you were saying, is, is a problem now.
No, well, I questioned it, I questioned it, it just got my attention, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think you probably are importing some mattresses. Um, and this is where I'm really trying to get my municipalities to look at your, your neighbors, what are they charging?
So, so we're not, we're not an enterprise, but the mattresses, uh, covering the cost, what we budget on my disposal. So I'm not overly concerned, but I'm questioning what's coming in.
Just at the town hall, now can you ask for identification, seal license, or something like that?
You, you can, you, you're not, you're not hurting the town, you just might be violating the town. There's a $1,000 fine for.
For what?
Unauthorized use of the landfill, it's right there, $1,000 fine. So if it's coming from out of town, that's a $1,000 fine.
For that, for that person.
It could be.
Yeah. Is it posted?
It's, everyone, it's.
Is it posted up there?
I don't know, uh, well, this is posted there, so it's right there.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, but you have a separate container up there for mattresses.
Yes.
Is it posted there?
No, it's, only thing that's posted on the side is who donated the container.
Master E.P.
Might be an idea to post that.
We still have to go through the attendant, right?
I'm not overly concerned, I just got my attention.
Okay.
Like I said, it's not costing you as a taxpayer, because they're paying for the disposal, and the disposal's covering all our costs.
Yeah, but $1,000 in our market is better than mine.
We wouldn't get it, more to come, we wouldn't get it, Peter wouldn't get to enjoy paying it, spending it somewhere else.
But again, you, you do have to look at, you know, what the other, you know, towns are charging, um, for that. And then, you know, also, when you're look, talking about your costs, you know, thinking about the administrative costs, or do you need to reorganize that, that trailer every now and then to get more mattresses in? So that is adding that extra cost to it. There is also paperwork involved with the mattresses, whether some of them are refused by the hauler because they're so contaminated and gross. Um, so there is some extra work involved with the mattress then with regular furniture, so, you know, increasing the cost, um, you know, is something you might want to look at, what those other hidden costs are that you're, you know, that you're not absorbing them somewhere else, especially with an enterprise fund.
Okay, so I, I see in the agenda, I, I made a mistake, I took the countertop buckets out of order with the compost bins, that's my fault. So we're already done with new businesses, and let's say something else, a new business?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Do we want to look at the swap shed rules? I, I just emailed them to everybody.
No, I have enough to reform the subcommittee, let them run with it.
Okay, okay.
I like this idea, let's take advantage of it.
Sounds good.
Uh, other items not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours, anything else that came up? Public import. Public input.
Audience?
Next scheduled meeting, October sixth, is that good for everyone?
Yep.
Nope, not for me, but go ahead without me.
The time is good, three o'clock?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next, the approval of minutes, May fifth, because it was not on your agenda last month. And approval of the minutes of August fourth. Wait, here a motion.
I move to approve those minutes, I've read them, they, it seemed good, the, which one, May fourth?
May fifth and August fourth.
I've read both, I, I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
I'll, I'll have second, I don't have copies of it yet, though.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Item number eleven.
Move to adjourn. What are you gonna do about the subcommittee?
Not on it.
You're the chair. Who, I, we don't need, two people don't need a chairman, who's on it?
You. Mr. Perry and Mr. Karen.
Really?
Yes. When you wanna meet.
Whenever. Whenever's convenient, I'm, I'm available, I'm sure you are, it's up to Peter.
You get, you get a little bit of time, but I would get something and get at least a report next meeting, and keep that moving.
Yeah, uh, uh, late afternoons work better for me, uh, just because of the treatments that I'm on. Um, by the time I get the treatments and recover, uh, you know, anything after three o'clock is, is good for me.
Good for me too.
Me too.
Okay.
I just, I will not be in town the, uh, seventeenth through the twenty-third of September.
You wanna do it next Monday?
I, I didn't understand you, Peter.
What day?
Well, you want to be next Monday?
Next Wednesday.
I, I will not be in town.
October fifteenth? No. No, you said the seventeen.
Okay.
Of, of September, September, yeah. Yeah, that was the seventeen.
Monday? October fifteen?
Sure, uh, ye- uh, we can do that.
Peter, did you say October fifteenth?
Yeah, that works.
I mean, September fifteenth, I'm sorry. I'll check with Leanne to see if this room is available.
Yep.
What time?
Uh, I'd like about three thirty, if that works.
Sure.
Alright, I'll send out an email to the three of you, uh, Mr. Anily, I'll call you, let you know if it's.
Okay, great. Thank you.
When I think of others. Okay, thank you.
Is a motion made to adjourn?
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. I, I, that's right, I, I learned that, uh, there's no discussion on adjournment.
Have a good day. Bye, Missy.
Bye. Send me that flyer.
I will.
Thank you. Have a good day.